Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our November 7th Board of Commissioners's regular scheduled board meeting now called to order. I've asked Mayor Pritham Smith to lead us into invocation and Commissioner Gardner to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, Lord, thank you for the opportunity we have to be here tonight, Lord. Father, we thank you that we have the opportunity to live in a country and a community where citizens and elected officials can come together and discuss issues that are before our community. Father, I pray that you'll give us wisdom as we hear issues tonight and even have to vote on some issues tonight. Father, I pray that everything that's said and done here tonight will be pleasing in your sight. Fast these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I ask Town Manager Mitchell to review the meeting protocol for public participation as it relates to this meeting. Adam, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Board members. Tonight's board meeting is both in-person and livestreamed on the town's YouTube channel and Facebook page. Tonight's meeting contains a public comment period and three scheduled public hearings. The public is invited to comment in person. When it is the appropriate time, Mayor Massengill will call on those wishing to address the town board. All attendees that have appeared in person to address the town board during the public comment period should provide your name and address on the registration sheet by the podium prior to the public comment period beginning. We ask all those wishing to address the town board either during the public comment period or during the public hearing that they begin their comments by clearly stating their name and address for the public record. The public is asked to keep all comments to three minutes so that all that wish to speak can be heard in a timely manner. And this concludes the protocol for tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from the October 18th, 2022 Town Board of Commissioners's regular scheduled meeting. Are any changes or additions to the minutes or entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 18th, 2022 Town Board of Commissioners's meeting as presented and recommended.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second. No further discussion. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. First presentation on our agenda tonight is item 4A, recognition of Detective Brett Kane, Certified Financial Crimes Investigator. More information about this agenda item will be presented by Police Chief Medina. Chief, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners.
Good evening.
Good evening. This is a recognition of satisfactory completion of the Certified Financial Crimes Investigator Course. Detective Brett Kane is being recognized for recently completing the Certified Financial Crimes Investigator Course through the International Association of Financial Crimes Investigators Program. Detective Kane started his law enforcement career with the Fuquay Varina Police Department in September of 2012. Detective Kane spent his first five years on patrol where he was an active field training officer for our agency. In August 2017, Detective Kane became a school resource officer at Fuquay Varina High School where he spent three years. After serving as a school resource officer, Detective Kane fulfilled his long-term goal of being a detective and transferred to the Criminal Investigative Division. His primary responsibility is to investigate fraud and financial crimes. Detective Kane made it his personal goal to become a Certified Financial Crimes Investigator. The requirements to achieve this certification were that he had to have several years dedicated to financial crimes and pass a three-hour, 300-question test with a minimum score of 70. Detective Kane spent most of his personal time after works studying and preparing for this exam. It should also be noted that Detective Kane was recently nominated as Hometown Heroes for 2002 and recently recognized, all while completing his general certification for instructor course. Again, congratulations to Detective Kane on earning his Certified Financial Crimes Investigator Certification through the International Association of Financial Crimes Investigators Program. Certified Financial Crimes Investigator certifies that Brett and Kane has completed the professional requirements of the Certified Financial Crimes Investigator Professional Program of the International Association of Financial Crimes Investigators and is hereby certified as a Certified Financial Crimes Investigator. International President Michael Carroll, October 15th, 2022.
Chief, Detective King, this is something that citizens of Fuquay Varina and this board very much appreciate you willing to take the time to get this certification. Crime has changed over the years as we know with technology. One, technology makes it easier to be able to catch the bad guys, but also makes it easier for bad guys to create crimes at the same time. And financial crimes are some of the crimes that hit people very hard, especially when they have their life savings and they can't make the payments the following month. And you, you know, have the certification and be able to help get these criminals out of our town or the ones that are not located in our town, but find a way to use the internet to build, create crimes in our community. So thank you for taking the time with the chief. Thank you for allowing him to do this, and this is great for Fuquay Varina. So congratulations. Can we come up here and check everybody's hands?
Yes, sir.
Congratulations.
Oh, good, good, good. Congratulations. Great job. Congratulations.
Get a picture. All right, can we get a picture?
Oh, we get a picture.
That is a big and strong. I don't want them chasing me.
Three, one, two, three. One, one, two, three. Congratulations, sir.
and Preserve Master Plan with CLH Design. More information about this agenda item will be presented by Assistant Town Manager Matthews. Mark, good evening.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Got a couple of remarks I'd like to make before turning it over to Zach Pierce with CLH Design, who's been the town's consultant for this master planning process. First, I wanted to give a little bit of background on the master plan process. This, we're excited to go through this process. This is what this town board has established as the vision for development of this future park, even going back to March of 2019, when Town Manager Mitchell came before the town board with the opportunity to receive 143 acres from Wake County Board of Commissioners and at that time laid out the plan for a master plan, that the acceptance of the property is based on the understanding that as the town becomes ready to develop the property, the town will undergo a master planning process, which would identify what uses may be developed on the property as sufficient funding is identified. These uses could include passive recreation, active recreation, and other municipal facilities. For example, a fire station or community center. And with this master plan, it actually promotes design flexibility and development feasibility for future town uses which may be active in nature. It's an exciting time. We're now in the construction drawing phase for the community center on the south side of Hilltop Needmore Road, and this is the master plan process, ultimately a concept plan that's come through community engagement and will lay out the future development of the property. Ultimately, CLH is going to make a presentation here that prioritize community input as the main driver for data and development of the Hilltop Needmore Town Park and Preserve Master Plan. The community was able to participate in the public input process at a series of in-person meetings as well as through Let's Talk FV. Four in-person public input meetings were held where attendees were able to pose questions, get a better understanding of the park planning process, and state their visions for what amenities they desire to be included in park enhancements. CLH Design led public input meetings there on Thursday, May 12th, at the Follow Me to Fuquay Varina concert, on May 21st, at the Fleming Loop Park during youth sports activities. There was, there were events at both the community center and Hilltop Needmore Town Park and Preserve clubhouse. A very robust amount of community engagement took place to even develop this concept plan, which Zach will provide a little bit more specifics and detail on that. In addition to these in-person meetings, the town released a survey in May and June through Let's Talk FV. The survey provided an opportunity for members of the community that were unable or just chose not to attend public input meetings with a chance to have their opinions heard. And also, the survey collected relevant demographic and residency data. This survey was promoted through the town website, newsletters, social media, constant contact email list, and strategic placed posters in high-traffic areas of the town. And in that 30-day period, the town received 818 responses, which is a great response rate, which was a big part of CLH having a sense of the community and developing this concept plan. In September, CLH Design presented a draft master plan concept for the park, including cost estimates to the town for consideration. At this time, as a reminder, funding has not been identified for any specific phases of the project or the entire master plan, but a placeholder was included for some initial master plan investment in the five-year plan. But as you're aware, the funding for all these phases is expected to be included in the system-wide facility master plan, which is scheduled to take place over the next second six to seven months of the fiscal year. And so that process will kick off in the early part of the calendar year. It's also important to note that this is, what you will see is intended to be a long-range master plan. And given the broad scope that you will see in this plan, scale of the park, and the town unfortunately does not have an unlimited budget, we can expect that this is really going to guide our development of the park in phases over the next 20 years. On October 10th, CLH Design and town staff presented the Hilltop Needmore Town Park and Preserve Master Plan to the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Advisory Board for informational purposes only. And the following day, on October 11th, this was shared through the public or on the town's social media for Let's Talk FV. So we're currently continuing to accept feedback on the concept plan through November 11th. And at the close of this window, CLH and management, as well as the Town Parks and Rec. and Cultural Resources staff, will review the responses, share those with our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and then bring back to the town board a recommendation that includes feedback from your advisory board and what was received through Let's Talk FV. So that's a bit about the process. Without further ado, I'm glad to recognize Zach Pierce and turn it over to him for a presentation from CLH Design. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. A pleasure being here. This is, I love what we do and really love, we wake up in the morning going to work. We're very fortunate to get to design parks. I'm Zach Pierce, a landscape architect with CLH Design. We're landscape architects and civil engineers who specialize in public work and also specialize in park development. I'm very fortunate on developing master plans and parks within the region such as Nightdale Station Park, Annie Louise Wilkerson Nature Preserve, Sandy Pines Nature Preserve, Cass Holt Road Park up in Holly Springs, Joiner Park for the town of Wake Forest, Doughty Park for the town of Nags Head, and the Kids Zone at the zoo. So I say that is every park has its own identity. There's nothing that I can recreate and cookie cutter for this. Every site is different. Every community is different. So really excited to have been working this whole year on developing the master plan for the town. Also, I live six minutes away from the park. So my family and I frequent this park a lot. The photo on the upper right, that was about October 2020. It's my daughter in the stroller, my dog right there. My son is up the way, kind of honing his bicycle skills, and then my in-laws are right there too. So we are users. We had a great time this past winter sledding with the police department. That was a ton of fun. I think they also enjoyed sledding in the mud, so I'm sorry, Anthony, all the mud. So we are, I say that we are park patrons here, so we have walked the course. So this is, this project's very special to us. I'm going to go through the project overview and background, some existing conditions, kind of go through the master plan process just to build up the anticipation, and then Holly's going to, I'm going to turn it over to Holly, and then she'll get into the fun part of actually going through the components of the concept plan. Just the regional context, this is located in the northeast part of town. This is going to help provide some recreation opportunities where I think it is needed. So it's similar to right near Johnson Pond and Hilltop Needmore intersection, and also just west of the Hilltop and 401 intersection. Quick site context, zooming in a little bit further, this is just the graphic that shows the red, the blue, and the yellow trails overlapping the aerial, kind of see how the network of trails currently interacts with the surrounding neighborhood and the proposed community center and elementary school. It takes some, kind of walk through a couple photos, just kind of highlighting just the special nature of this park, the beautiful views, the bench placements were great, kind of framing that, just the vegetation and the long views that you get and how you can experience the different spaces as you go through this linear park. It's a very, very different and unique park than a lot in, within North Carolina. There's not a lot of opportunities to have this gem that you all have here to be able to embrace and provide for the citizens. I said the rolling topography of the red, red trail going down and just those long cascading views and the winding paths, and it's just very calming. More often than not, when I pass people, they're smiling, they're looking at you, they say happy trails, or they're in a deep conversation with whoever. So it's really see that everybody comes out and enjoys this park. The existing water feature really just enhances the variety of experiences that you see. The steep topography on the red trail, which after doing a long run is no joke on your, on those, with the steep parts of that trail, and then the yellow trail, which was great for some of the easier casual strolling. We do have some existing structures on here, the clubhouse, which is recently renovated and looks fantastic. The maintenance facility, which Holly will point out, is on that northwest corner, which provides an opportunity for some existing infrastructure that would help support the park maintenance. And also, where the golf carts were stored next to the clubhouse also provides some opportunity to be converted into a picnic shelter that could be rented out. We want to be, we want to be considerate of our neighbors. A couple of parts of the trail go very close to their houses. Some have more vegetation than others, some, so we want to be very cognizant of what that park edge is like, what's the edge condition, the views onto other people's property, and then their views onto the park, and then site security. So we want to make sure we're being a good neighbor to the park. As you can see in the lower right-hand corner, it was an old golf course, so these were just very simple, narrow golf cart paths. There are, there are several areas that it's in rough shape. So we want to explore, in the, in the concept plan, you'll see kind of widening out those trails, kind of relocating some of them, but they need some maintenance. It's, there are some areas that are definitely some tripping hazard from the, from the large trees over time and just the general use over the years for the thin layer of asphalt. But again, the views and the long, the winding topography, you just can't, you just can't beat it. I go through the master plan process. So we started in the spring of 2022 where we didn't put the pen to paper, it was killing us. We wanted to start, wanted to start drawing. We wanted to start going, but nope, we wanted to listen to what the community said. We enjoyed seeing a couple of you at our events and community input gathering sessions with the Let's Talk FV and then site visits. So we took that and went into our office, and we have 22 staff members, and we call a design charrette. So the folks who aren't even involved in the day-to-day part of this process, we got pizza, we walked, a couple of us walked the site in the morning, came back, had lunch, what landscape architects and civil engineers do, we get roll of trays, we get markers, we just throw out a bunch of ideas and really get that, the creative juice. We have a corner in our office, it's called Sketchy Place. So it's really where we get creativity, and we even have our marketing manager and accounting manager involved too. So it's really a collaborative effort. And then we're in the fall here, we're presenting the concept plan to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, which you have. We're here tonight for the Commissioners' meeting and then also on Let's Talk FV. As we kind of conclude, we'll look at the final concept and master plan here this winter. And then Phase 1 construction, as Mark alluded to, was still to be determined. So Mark, we do have some of the photo examples of the four input meetings, the Follow Me to Fuquay concert, after a little bit of a bout with some rain that night, but it was a very lively crowd. The band was great, we got some fantastic feedback. Fleming Loop Park, it was a hot Saturday, but there's a lot of athletics, youth athletics there. The Fuquay Varina Community Center with the volleyball leagues there, and then at the clubhouse itself. So we had, we hit a lot of different times of the week, the days of the weeks, and got a very diverse pool of feedback. I had a cheesy selfie in there after one of my running training runs, and then also what our staff, we went out and walked the park site. And then we also had the public inputs survey that was distributed around town. Some of the, you know, the takeaways, the concerns about the site that we've had the great discussions is the protection of water quality, the preservation of the site natural areas, the lighting onto the surrounding neighbors and roadways, and then the noise concerns. The values that we commonly heard out of the community were nature preservation, health and wellness, a sense of community, and connectivity. And again, the priorities furthermore were the paved trail improvements, hiking trails, playground, pickleball, disc golf, exercise stations, dog park, wildlife observation and preservation, picnic areas, and a challenge and obstacle course. So now comes the fun part, and go back. And so Holly is going to come up here and go through the different areas around, around the park, and then we welcome any questions from the Commissioners and Mayor.
All right, good evening. So my name is Holly Waterman. I'm a landscape designer with CLH Design. I'll start with providing an overview of our concept plan and then diving into three different enlargement areas so you can get a better idea of some of the details we're proposing here. So just to orient you a little bit, looking at this map, this is oriented due north and Hilltop Needmore Road is that road that cuts right through the center of the park, excuse me. This shows the park in its entirety as well as the proposed community center and school just south of Hilltop Needmore Road there. So our overall vision for this park is really to center our highest activity, most impactful amenities, kind of at the core of the park around where the existing community center is. This is already kind of emerging as the center of the park, the hub of the activity, so we're just building upon this. Also, anything that brings additional traffic or noise or crowds to this park, we can best support that, we can provide the best infrastructure for that in this area. So you'll see that most of what we're proposing here is around that existing clubhouse building, which to orient you is just north of the proposed community center, kind of at the nexus of Hilltop Needmore and the neighborhood road there. And then as we kind of fade out to the north and to the south from that central area, we're kind of moving from more developed to less developed, higher activity to lower activity areas. So kind of fading from more urban to more natural as you get towards the northern and southern edges of the park. So looking at the first enlargement area, this is the northern zone of the park where the existing red trail is, so we're continuing to call this the red trail area, since it's familiar to everyone who uses the park. If you've been out there, you'll notice that this is a super hilly area of the park. It's also a little bit wet sometimes, and that's because the northern property line actually goes through a flood zone, through a flood zone. So water and managing water is a little bit of a concern in here, and we're being mindful of that. And it's really this topography and this flood concern that has led us to kind of preserve this area of the park as the, more of the preserve component, to Hilltop Needmore Park and Preserve. So not only do we want to have a low impact or a light footprint in this area of the park, we want to actually bring some nature back. So we're looking at some reforestation efforts around numbers five and three, bringing some forest cover back into that area. We're also looking at a pollinator meadow, and that's shown at number four. So right now, this park is mostly mowed lawn areas, which is a lot of maintenance. So we're looking at bringing in more opportunities for wildlife, kind of reintroducing some of the nature that was there before this was a golf course, and then giving people different opportunities to explore these features. So as Zach mentioned, the existing path out there right now is the old cart path. So one of our main priorities is actually to bring that cart path into kind of more of a greenway standard, so repaving it, widening it, so it can support both pedestrians and cyclists, and then getting out kind of the bumps and humps that are out there now, and making it just a smoother path for everyone to enjoy. So that dark brown line kind of traveling through the center of the site, that's our proposed greenway path. And for the most part, that, at least in this area, that pretty much follows the existing footprint of the cart path. Where it varies a little bit is in between numbers five and three, and right now, that cart path goes up those hills and around some of those marshy areas, and we're actually proposing that it just cut straight through. And instead, we're looking at including some different hiking, walking opportunities out there. So number three indicates a hiking trail. This would be a natural surface trail. It would not be accessible, it would cover a lot of that topography out there, so it's definitely a workout. And it would connect to the greenway, kind of travel, it's that dashed line around number three, kind of travel through some of those reforestation areas, up the hills, catch some of those big views at the top of the hill, and then come back down to meet with the greenway again. And then at number five, we're proposing a boardwalk trail. So once that area has a chance to recover a little bit, if, once we've reforested it and some of the wetland ecology has a chance to return, this would be a really cool opportunity for people to go out there and, and see what's going on, see some wildlife, kind of experience that wetland a little bit. And a boardwalk is low impact, you know, has a light footprint, doesn't require a lot of digging out, and it's a better flood option as well, as far as paths go. So that's kind of the highlights of the red trail area. I'll also point out, at number one, we're proposing a dog park. This is right off of Johnson Pond Road, and we're envisioning this as kind of a shady, under-the-trees, big fenced-in area, plenty of room for dogs to run. And this would be supported by a parking lot, so that's that area with a P just to the east of that. So a small parking lot off of Johnson Pond Road to support this dog park and some of these other amenities that are in that far northern area of the park, because that's a bit of a hike if you're parking at the clubhouse. So that maintenance facility that Zach mentioned, that is that rectangle just northeast of the dog park. So we're looking at maintaining that to support park maintenance services, provide a little storage, so that will definitely be staying in the plan. And then to the southeast of that parking lot, where number six is shown, that is a proposed nature play playground. So this part of the park is all about exploration, it's about adventure, it's about being in touch with nature, and so we wanted to introduce a different kind of play option that better follows those themes kind of in this area. So we, you'll see we do show another playground elsewhere in the park, but that one's more traditional, this one is more loosely structured, and the play components would actually be natural materials, which you can see in that photo there, things like trees, rocks, a little bit looser. And then the last thing I haven't mentioned, at number two, we're proposing a challenge course. So this is a really unique feature, fun for both kids and adults, it's also kind of an exercise feature. This area of the park where number two is located, is kind of a flat area with this great view down the hill as the park sort of plunges back towards that northern wooded area. So we wanted to create something here that sort of forced people to stop, take a look, and have an activity to enjoy, because it is a really beautiful area of the park. So now we're moving on to where the existing blue trail loop is, and then you'll see around the clubhouse, the clubhouse is number two, the red trail is starting to loop back in on itself. So that's the area we're zooming in on now. As I mentioned earlier, this is really the heart of the park, this is where we're proposing the most change, where we're bringing in a lot of new activities. So number two, where that clubhouse is shown, as Zach mentioned, it's been renovated recently, it's in great shape. We really want to even build upon this more and, and create kind of an entry space outside around this plaza, so something that creates a sense of arrival for people coming to the park, maybe even provide some signage and orients everyone to the different activities that the park offers. So number two, where the clubhouse is shown, that's where we want to build out a small plaza to kind of welcome everyone to Hilltop Needmore. As far as parking goes, we're preserving all of the existing parking, that's in the gray behind number two, preserving all of that existing parking, and then adding an additional lot just across the street there, and that's by number four. That's mainly to support the multipurpose fields that we're proposing in this area. So at number five, we have two multipurpose fields shown. These are for youth athletics, so they're smaller than any, any kind of standard field. They would be illuminated, and thankfully, the lighting technology these days has come a long ways, and there's been a lot of engineering to kind of remedy the glare and the lighting pollution concerns. So we would definitely be seeking out those kind of solutions in this area around those multipurpose fields. Additionally, we located these here because they were closer to the road than the neighbors, and kind of in that high-impact area of the park. However, we do know that there are neighbors to the north of this, and we want to be cognizant of that, and really create a good, healthy, vegetated buffer between those fields and those residences. So you'll see some forest cover to the north and to the east of those fields. There's also a decent amount of topography there as well that provides some additional separation. So moving back across the road towards the clubhouse, just south of number two, where number one is shown, those are some pickleball courts that we're including in the plan. Just northwest of that, we're showing a playground, so this would be more of the classic playground, a little more traditional, but we would love to include some, some fun and unique options out there. And then just north of that is the existing golf cart storage facility that we would like to renovate into a picnic shelter pavilion, so that we think that would be great to support the playground and all of the other family features of this area, just a place for events or birthday parties, or something to support all of those amenities. And then the last thing in this area is at number three, so along that greenway path there, we're proposing some exercise stations, or just some small little outposts along that trail for people to stop and do some pull-ups, do some push-ups, whatever the machine offers you, we'll have some, a variety of options out there. And then the final piece is the entire southern portion of the park, so everything south of Hilltop Needmore Road is where we are now. Really, the major proposal in this area is an 18-hole disc golf course, that's kind of our main feature. That kind of forms a loop around these different pieces of the park. We imagine people would likely park either at the shared school and community center parking lot, which is shown kind of in the northeast of that enlargement. However, we're also proposing two small additional parking lots off of Brushy Meadows Road. So one, right where that crossover happens, right where that pedestrian crossover happens, and then another just north of that, to the southeast of the pond, just a couple little pull-in spaces, and that would be mainly to provide some accessibility to the pond and some of the amenities around the pond. Likely, people would park at one of these parking spots to play the disc golf course, make a full loop back to their car. And the other feature here is, of course, the greenway. This is probably the area of the park where we're proposing the most variation from the existing cart path, and that's because we want to create a lot of separation between the disc golfers and the pedestrians in this area of the park. We really want to avoid any conflict between the two. So you'll see that the, the greenway is kind of pushed to one side of the property while the disc golf course is pulled to the other side. And just for reference, even in these narrow areas of the park that are shown here, we have about 400 feet of width, so that's a lot of space for both, both activities to occur and create a little separation. And again, this is another area of the park where we're very mindful about our neighbors. We want to create a good buffer, have lots of trees and some good view screening between these front yards and backyards and, and the pedestrians and the disc golfers. This disc golf course is intended to be more recreational, so really for players of all ages, all skill levels, less so for competition. So again, if you have people of all skill levels out there, you want a healthy separation between your pedestrians and your disc golfers. The last piece of this is at number one, where we're showing the existing pond. So this is that large pond that's out there now. We really want to create more of a destination here, so we're proposing two educational piers that stretch out into the water and allow people to kind of experience that in a different way. And then we're also proposing some plantings around the edge of that pond to kind of soften the edge and introduce some wildlife habitat and create a little division between the path and the water's edge. So we really want to make that a feature. So that is the overview.
Happy to take any questions from commissioners and mayor?
Few comments on it so far. First of all, thank you for putting your time in here. I know it was a long process with our, our community at multiple places that you mentioned. I saw you at several of those locations, and those were not just places that you chose to go, but also part of our agreement with, part of your contract and agreement with the town was to go out and about and get lots of feedback right here, the amount of hours on there. So thank you for taking that feedback in, into consideration, thank you for spending time out there at the park, and it makes, makes a difference on coming up with designs right here. So comments, I'm going to make about it here tonight, or that, the new, new additional vegetation that you're adding, I mean, originally that place was 100% trees, then a golf course was built and homes were built and everything was cut down, and so you're reforesting and adding trees back there for new wild, new wildlife in there. I know that's something that's been important to discuss, along with all the other objectives that you talked about in regards to it. What this plan so far does is it provides something for all of our citizens of Fuquay Arena and all age groups also at the same time, and multi-use things, I think that's, that shows the comments that citizens made, that I believe you had over 800 online ideas and suggestions for the park, in addition to the in-person suggestions with the notepads and the sticky notes on the board. And parking, I know one thing that's going to be a concern for any neighbors around there is parking on shoulders and destruction of, of front yards and adding new parking lots, since it's a destination park, I was glad to see those new additional parking lots in there, right there to keep, keep the roads from being blocked and somebody getting their front yard parked in the middle of the pretty grass front yard. I would, I would not want that either, so that's, that's great there. I know that, I can take comments from other board members here in just a minute, but that you're continuing to get feedback, I believe it's, you're continuing to receive feedback from the public until December, isn't that correct?
Till.
Was it January?
November 11.
November 11.
Yep.
And having, but let me rephrase. When is the meeting that we're taking us up on these agenda for a vote? That's what I was going to say. So, and you, you're receiving input on that, and so was this board here, I know this board has received emails and, and comments in regards to that, and we'll continue to provide those with management at the same time. Any other board members, like to make any comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner. Commissioner Harris. Mr. Gardner, go ahead.
Well, Bill spoke first.
I'm just curious, so many priorities, I looked at when you, when you outlined priorities, because I think what the concept is, is to try to look at and address each of those priorities that were expressed. Was there a one top priority that sort of gives us a guideline as to where to, to start the conversation?
Honestly, I think it is that continuous trail around the property.
The continuous.
People are, want to be on that trail, that's what we've heard, that's what makes it special now, that was, maybe we're able to get them onto the property now. So it is making sure that, that existing tra, or that existing trail is improved and positioned that could accommodate the future of elements within the master plan, but that seemed to rise to the top.
In addition to that, then that leads me just to another question about the golf cart paths. Were there a large portion of the paths in the condition where we saw the need, there was great need, a great need for repair?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a lot of aggregation, and there's just some, some areas that are just some gravel areas, and some were very bumpy because of the existing tree roots.
All right, and one last question. In one of the pictures, the golf, or the walking path were, appeared to be wider, is that part of the recommendation to, to widen the existing path, walking path?
That's correct. We want to make that to the town greenway standard, which is a 10-foot wide asphalt trail, so it gets a little accommodate some, and some passing by, so it does accommodate a cyclist and also those who were strollers and just a multitude of, of people, and accommodate a higher volume of people walking to, rather than stepping out into the grass and, so you can stay on the trail and be safe.
Oh yeah, thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Harris, Mr. Gardner.
I was just thinking, when my family moved back here after we traveled around a little bit in the mid-'80s, we lived, and we backed up to this property, but it was pasture, and the cows would get out and come down our street. And to see so much of, well, then it turned into this beautiful, the golf course was so pretty, and people walked on it that didn't play golf when it, when the golf course was not open, even then, people were enjoying those trails, and particularly the bluffs on the north side of the property that were, it's so pretty. And I'm just so glad that we have something that's going to preserve the beauty that was, that, that had been, everyone had enjoyed and that was there, so I like the preserve part of it. And I tell you, there are going to be a lot of people happy about those pickleball courts. I know that was a lot of the comments that we got, we've gotten, because we have people who are really enjoying that sport right now, as, as they are around the country. But thank you for this, this concept plan, it, it just seems to have a lot for everybody. Appreciate the time that you've put into it.
Thanks so much.
Professor Tim, do you have a comment?
Yes, yes, sir, I do have a couple of comments, then a question. Two things that I just kind of jumped out at me is, number one, this pollinator or open meadow, I think that returning kind of a, really nat, very natural-looking area was kind of unique, I like that. And then I also like the boardwalk trail, because that, just the photographs that you presented, what your vision looks like, would be, again, a very natural-looking area, allow the wetlands to kind of go back to a natural look, I like that. So I like both of those things. I do have a question, the multipurpose fields are, you know, obviously a newer type addition to a golf course, nature trail type thing. I see in the, in the diagram you have, you have a reforesting there, is that, just tell me a little bit more about how you think that will look between those homes and, and those, those athletic fields there?
Yeah, and that distance is about, from home plate to that northern property line, it's about 700 feet or more, so it's, it's a long ways away. So that reforestation, we would love to put some of that native tree species back, both hardwoods and some pines, to give the biodiversity, and then, and look at this accession planning of what's out there now, there would be some grading to get the fields in there, but really look at the, creating that. that vegetation, the thicker wooded edge, just to provide the backdrop when you're observing the multipurpose fields. When you look to the north, you see a nice backdrop, and then also protects the neighbors to the north for the sound and just their visual.
And where that reforestation area is shown is also a pretty steep slope as well that's currently mowed. So, again, that's another place where we could long-term reduce some maintenance by having a good vegetative covering on that slope there.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much for that. Thank you. It's all having this, ma'am. Thanks, sir.
I have a...
Commissioner Watson, go ahead.
Comment, and then a, just a quick question. Reading through the feedback, we got the feedback later today, it looks like you've taken into account just about everything that folks wanted, from the walking trails, pickleball, dog park, and all of that, which is great. I know we, I personally like to see the reforestation and keeping a lot of that nature. That was a big topic that came up, too. They wanted to keep the nature, so that is really nice to see. My question is on the two parking lots that are in the residential location, do you have an idea of how big those would be, how many spaces those would be, and what those would sort of look like as far as lighting and the impact in that residential area?
Sure. The exact numbers for those parking lots has not been fully determined. There's probably, the southern one, south of the elementary school, that was probably about twenty spaces, twenty to twenty-five. Off of the pond, that is directly off of the road, it's about six to nine. And then, the one north of the multipurpose fields, east of the existing clubhouse, was about forty to fifty.
Forty to fifty, yeah, that's the largest proposed.
That's the one that's right there by the ball fields?
That's right.
Okay.
And we would look at whatever lighting levels that the town UDO would want to achieve at a park facility, work with public safety, and then also just to see what sort of light levels and the times of days that would need to happen, so.
Okay. That was my only question. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner, Commissioner Haynes?
Yes, one thing, I know we had talked about it earlier with the ponds, so with the adding of the educational piers to disqualify this for wildlife, for it to be fishing, because I've been asked that multiple times, could it possibly be fishing done at this pond? Now, I don't, so...
It's been labeled as educational piers until that's deemed differently. So, on the master plan, it's deemed educational piers, so it's, as far as a change of use, it's not what we have in the master plan right now.
Okay. What would it take to make it so that they could be fished at? I know the Wildlife Commission has to be involved in approvals. I think that's what Commissioner Haynes is asking, what would it take to get...
Yeah.
So, to directly address that question, there are a number of steps with the North Carolina
Wildlife Commission that would be needed to make that conducive to fishing. This educational pier would not be inconsistent with that. There are other permitting requirements, there's the expense of operating a fishing program, and the town taking on liability of that. Currently, our greatest need is to actually stabilize the pond area, which is part of this master plan, and building the piers in is part of that. And so, this is compatible with establishing a fishing program, but I wouldn't look at the two hand-in-hand. That's going to be a program decision for the future. But it's not, it's not, it would be difficult to establish a fishing program without the educational pier.
And the reason why I ask that, I've had people who are wheelchair-bound, who've asked, you know, with the piers being included, because there's not a lot of places where wheelchair-bound people can go to fish, so they were asking, could this be amenity added to the park? So, I've been asked that multiple times, so that's the reason why I ask.
And that's why we want to have some of the accessible parking spaces nearby of that, and then the pathway to the pier would be accessible.
I do think that's something that Mark, our staff, needs to be considering for the future, just as Commissioner Haynes has mentioned. I know there's been a lot of comments in the public that want to be able to go fish right there, and I've asked why it says no fishing out there, and the rules behind it. I know we've had conversations about that, so I do, I understand what Commissioner Haynes is asking completely. All right.
And just saying, you know, definitely thank you for your time. I think we, I had an in-depth conversation at North Carolina League of Municipalities with your organization, and being on the Parks and Recreation Board, I totally understand the hard work it goes into looking at this and trying to answer all the questions and meet all the needs of our town, so I definitely understand that.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
No further comments. Okay, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you. It's beautiful.
Okay, next item on our, next item on our agenda is the public comment period. At this time, I will ask the town clerk, call individuals that are in attendance and have registered to address the town board prior to the meeting. The public comment period is a time for the public to address the town board about any matter that is not the subject of a scheduled public hearing. Those speaking are asked to begin clearly by saying your name and address for the public record. I do know we have a lot of people signed up tonight that want to speak, so I ask that you please don't be repetitive, so that people may have a chance to speak, or we'll move on to the next subject. Also, three minutes is what's going to be allowed, and we will be strictly invited by that, too. Thank you. Rose, who do you have signed up first to speak tonight?
First, we have Thelma Mann.
Come on up.
Thelma Mann, thirteen twenty-nine Bass Lake Road, Holly Springs, Fuquay ETJ, about twenty years ago. I attended the last meeting, and I came for, I came to just kind of get some information. And when I got here, to my surprise, the discussion of social districting came up. So, anyway, the focus at the meeting was creating foot traffic in downtown Fuquay. A proposal was made to create a social district in downtown Fuquay, ten a.m. to ten p.m., seven days a week, with the intent to create a vibrant downtown, boost local economy, and provide unique cultural experiences. A few alcohol-serving establishment owners/refs spoke to the board members about how creating a social district would create foot traffic. And as I sat there and I looked around, I thought, where is everybody? Where were the business owners? You know, this is total honesty. And I said, where are the Fuquay residents and community to provide input? And thankfully, four of the board members did vote to table the vote on this and to do it on November twenty-second. We did, of course, and I was disappointed, we had one board member who voted to go ahead and vote that particular name, and I was disappointed in that. And also, I have a concern, a social district is the defined area in which a person may consume alcoholic beverages sold by an ABC committee located within the social district area. My question is this, other than alcohol being made readily available throughout the social district area, what else would be allowed? As I read the proposal in the last paragraph, it said other events would be allowed. Okay, we need to know what those events are. For example, and I direct this toward no particular person intentionally, but the chips fall where they may, I have a specific concern about a cafe on Main Street in Fuquay. That cafe is called Brews, B-R-U-S, on Main. The storefront window displays New York coffee, New York eats, beer, and specialty drinks. It sounds like a typical cafe. I think most of us would agree. However, I asked the owner, and I made sure it was the owner, I said, do you have special events here? She said clearly, no, we do not. Okay, so we created some foot traffic, for the back here, others that are not here. We created our own foot traffic, we went through Fuquay, I contacted people, people, I do contact other people. And anyway, Brews on Main has frequent drag queen events. If that's your thing, have it. However, I wonder, would these events be allowed in a social district? I think it needs to be clearly defined, and if you want to look...
Miss Mann, we didn't finish up your thought here in three minutes, please.
Is it gone?
Yes, ma'am.
It's gone?
It is. Please finish up your thought, though.
Okay. Anyway, I have some concerns, so later on, I have something to show you, things that have, are taking place at Brews on Main. Okay?
Thank you for your time, Miss Mann. Rose, who do you have next?
Next, we have Susan Oliver.
Ms. Oliver, please come up.
I'm Susan Oliver, and my address is seven twenty-one Valley Water Street in Fuquay Varina. And how did I find out about the social district agenda? A friend told me. I didn't see it in the last three months' focus newsletters or the Town Fall Suburban Magazine, I read that to keep up. I didn't see it there, so I started searching online, and I watched the video of your last October eighteenth board meeting. Well, why do we need a social district? To sell alcohol. I see the equation as alcohol equal foot traffic equal money. What do they cost? More policing, monitoring the rules and regulations, signs, cups, publicity, et cetera? Do we have to hire extra police officers for it? And if we do, is that how we want them to spend their time? Well, who will it benefit? The restaurants that sell alcohol from ten a.m. to ten p.m., is the way I see it. Well, what other events or cultural experiences will it create? It's very vague in the proposal, so we can only speculate what doors it might open. Well, I saw a flyer for a drag queen story hour that was held in June in Brews on the Main. All right, this was the flyer. And according to it, well, I saw a promotion on WRL, was it a one-time event, the rep interviewed on the news that it would be bigger and better next year. Well, I looked at the flyer, and I did notice that one of the sponsors was Ms. Watson on the board, and am I correct that you also worked with the owner of Brews on the Main?
You are not correct, no.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, I found other drag, twenty-twenty-two drag queen events that have occurred by searching the Facebook pages. So, I have found, we have had Drag Queen Bingo, Drag Shows, Drag Pride, Pride Drag Brunch, and there's another one scheduled for November twentieth, for a Sunday coming up, that is a drag brunch. And these are just samples that I found. Will these events spill out onto the sidewalks and streets if this passes? Is the board supporting these events? I am against the social district project. There are many restaurants where people can drink responsibly inside. As a former high school teacher, I can see teenagers trying to participate in underage drinking and who knows what else. Teenagers are very creative. Parents should be able to walk with their children down the street without being concerned about the alcohol level and the people they pass by. So, do we want Fuquay Varina to be known for its safe, family-oriented, small-town atmosphere, or, as this flyer says, eat, drink, drag? That's what it says on the flyer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time, ma'am. Rose, who do you have next?
Lucille Von Cannon. Martha Smith.
Ma'am, we, Ms. Lucille, we can't let people have multiple times. If you'd like to share her comments or some comments, you can, or somebody else can, but we don't defer time to somebody else. No, because it becomes unlimited time eventually if every single person in a room gives away time, so we don't do that. Ms. Von Cannon, would you like to come up, though?
Alcohol consumption...
Ms. Von Cannon, please, I got to get you officially set your name and address for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Lucille Von Cannon, one oh one Parker Drive, Fuquay Varina. Alcohol consumption should not be a primary focus for creating a social district in Fuquay Varina. In order to create foot traffic, I propose we create a forum with businesses in Fuquay Varina community to provide input into what we can do to create a downtown atmosphere. Do what is best for all. Design a custom plan unique to Fuquay. Fuquay's always had a unique, small-town atmosphere, and I don't think we should destroy that. We need to have a place that's safe for our young people. I have great grandchildren and great-grandchildren, and I want a safe place for them to come visit me. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for your time. Rose?
Martha Smith.
Ms. Smith, please come forward.
Yes, Martha Smith, five oh one Raleigh Street in Fuquay, to the Honorable Blake Massengill and the town commissioners. I'm a sixty-five-year-aged resident of Fuquay Varina, twenty-eight-year property owner, a graduate of Fuquay High School and of Campbell College. I am requesting the commissioners of Fuquay to deny the proposal for social districting, proposal for the designated areas described in your website. The proposal does not accelerate the image that the residents desire, is to promote a Fuquay as a family-friendly town. The Fuquay and Varina do not offer options for a family to shop for clothes, shoes, birthday gifts, sports equipment, or any family entertainment, all essentials for daily living in a healthy environment. Your sole target is the alcohol consumer who's twenty-five years, twenty-one years older or older. Is this really the image that you envisioned for our town? In your reasoning of anticipated benefits you've listed on the website, one is economic vitality. A family of four will spend much more money meeting their necessities and personal extras than an individual buying drinks on any given day. Two, an enhanced exposure to cultural experiences. What family wants to expose themselves or their family to over-twenty-one focused events? You listed revenue. If I personally were a restaurant owner in the social district, it would be counterintuitive for me to encourage a paying patron in my business to stroll down the street to a competitor's business to buy more drinks. Attracting more businesses. A business owner would not be financially savvy to develop in a vicinity that only targeted one limited group. The opportunity to host more events. Again, your target group is narrow-minded and single-focused, and the focus is definitely not for the betterment of Fuquay. Fuquay has increased the alcohol consumption availability on every corner of town with restaurants and breweries, pizzerias, coffee shops, ABC stores, bars, and grills, and still, you need to develop more revenue-based businesses. So, obviously, alcohol has not been the answer to revenue-producing commodity. You are not focusing on the needs of the community, it's a basic law of supply and demand. For those of you who live outside the proposed social district, you have geographically removed yourself and your family from the insecurities of having a car parked on your front lawn for two hours, only to call the police to investigate and find a driver has passed out from a drug overdose, or to have an individual knock on your door at ten o'clock at night to use your restroom. Yes, and these are real incidences.
Ma'am, we are at the three-minute mark. If you would, please finish your comment.
Your state, the commissioners in the town are here to include everyone, and you're responsible for each person who is here. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Rose, who do you have next?
Marcus Bartow.
Marcus Bartow? Please come forward.
Marcus Bartow, four seven zero one Lenaria Lane, we're on the Blue Trail. I want to say thank you for all of your work. It definitely is, it's a lot of work to put together to a vision. The area that I want to concern is, there's a lot of mention around preservation and nature, and you guys specifically focused on a number of your call-outs in your photos as well, of all of the areas that you're going to focus and retain and rebuild. When it came around the baseball fields, though, you defended it seven hundred feet from home plate. There was no mention of how far that field goes, how far that plate radiates into the backyards of the homes that are behind it. And just being conscious around fields that are traditionally lit the majority of the time, day and night, with the families that live there, they use telescopes in the backyard, that flies kites. You mentioned sledding in that area. That's one of the things that, you know, when we moved in as a family, and most of the neighborhood is turning around to younger families, we walk the trails regularly, we go biking, we take meetings on the trails. If you're going to build it to preserve it, and that's what everyone keeps saying, is we're going to preserve it. If you're going to build it to preserve it, and that's what everyone keeps saying is we're going to preserve it, but then you talk about this heavy concentration of parking and baseball fields with lighting, and there's not a ton of consideration of all the families that you're going to influence that are right there. So that is where I want you to focus your time on is, embedded similar to Carrion Holly Springs everywhere around us. When they build the nature parks, they build it in nature instead of devastating the nature around it. There was a huge public outcry when we put in the elementary to take out a lot of the old trees that had been there for twenty-plus years. Again, you can say I'm going to reforest, but I've lived in Fuquay long enough that reforesting is putting in a couple of two- to three-year-old trees. Nobody comes in, no arborist comes in, nobody maintains them, and half the trees die. So again, if you're going to come back and reforest, make sure that there's the budget and the allocation to actually do it right. Take care of the trees, grow the trees, preserve the nature around it, and just be conscious of the communities and the homes that people live there. We don't live six minutes away. It's our backyard. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Rose? They will not be cheering after each comment, or we will not continue public comments tonight, folks. We've got a lot of people that want to speak. Rose, who do you have next?
Ashley Manstead.
Ms. Manstead?
Hi. My name's Ashley Manstead and I live at 5608 Brushy Meadows Drive in Fuquay. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of, about the Hilltop Needmore Town Park Master Plan as both a longtime advocate of this park and as a resident of Crooked Creek. In two thousand and fourteen, I helped begin the effort to save this green space from development when the golf course closed. In two thousand and seventeen, I created and still manage the Hilltop Needmore Town Park Advocacy Group Facebook page, which is currently just shy of five thousand park supporters for this location. While overall, many of us think that this master plan is very appealing, I want to voice two areas of major concern. First, the addition of two parking lots on Brushy Meadows Drive is alarming. Brushy Meadows is a narrow road with no curbs or sidewalks. So narrow that if too many vans are passing one another, then one needs to practically move into a neighbor's yard to be able to get by. There would be no way for parkgoers to tell when these little supplemental lots were full, therefore inviting the general public to use our narrow residential street seeking parking all day, every day. Crooked Creek is anticipating enough hardship and safety issues with the increased cut-through traffic related to the development of the community center and the school. Adding these lots would be detrimental to the safety of our community and create even more hardship than what's already coming down the pipeline. Second, the two ballfields fronting Hilltop Needmore Road. The noise and the light pollution from the ballfields will not only negatively impact the quality of life of the residents living nearby, their overkill at this location, and it will unnecessarily destroy the serene natural habitat of wildlife and the mature trees that exist there. Demolishing that natural habitat on the Blue Trail is exactly opposite from the people's vision of this park, as was represented in the town's own community survey and recapped in the community input section on page thirteen of the town's PowerPoint. Nowhere in that list of priorities or desires were ballfields even listed. We cannot lose sight of the fact that this park exists and belongs to you solely because of the effort and the desire of local citizens to preserve it in its natural beauty and save it from overdevelopment. We know that you're going to add some things, but added cost to the town's budget and expenditure of our taxpayer dollars on an amenity that taxpayers do not want in this specific location is one of many reasons that the ballfield should be removed. In closing, I want to say that the Crooked Creek community has been and will continue to be a good neighbor to this property and to you, the property owners. We simply ask that you do the same, to be a good neighbor to our community, and remove the parking lots that will add hardship to our small, quiet residential street, and to follow the desires of the people voiced in your own surveys and exemplified through the last eight years of citizen involvement. And please remove the two ballfields from the master plan that would destroy the green space that we have worked so hard and so long to preserve. Thank you.
We're going to take our next comment, Rose, and we're going to end in public comments tonight if we continue to have this outburst right here. Rose?
Shirley Rogers.
Okay. Folks, we have another outburst. Public comment period will be over with tonight. Ma'am, go ahead.
Thank you. My name's Shirley Rogers. I live at 5440 Greens Flag Lane in Crooked Creek. My husband and I have lived in Crooked Creek for twenty-five years and primarily used the Shady Greens entrance to the neighborhood. While our house does not view the proposed ballfields, we are adamantly against building ballfields along Hilltop Needmore. Since the Hilltop Needmore Park has been in place, the traffic in and out of the neighborhood has increased dramatically. The curve on Hilltop Needmore makes turning left into this neighborhood dangerous. There are always skid marks where drivers are slammed on brakes because of cars waiting to turn left. I've seen many people make the right turn onto Shady Greens at a high rate of speed because of the speed on the cars traveling on Hilltop Needmore. The crosswalk immediately after entering the neighborhood is also very dangerous. Cars turning into the neighborhood not knowing that that crosswalk is there have had to stop quickly to avoid pedestrians. With all the houses in this neighborhood, there are a lot of delivery vehicles using this entrance. They may be unaware of this crosswalk. I have had to slam on my brakes for pedestrians and dogs darting across the street just using the trails. I think it is important for you to remember this entrance was designed for the neighborhood and a small golf course. It doesn't support all the additional traffic and congestion you're proposing. Your plan of adding ballfields, pickleball courts, and a playground along with the vents at the clubhouse is just too much for this entrance. Just last week, I took a picture, and I have it, I don't want to waste my time showing it to you, but I will, of the cars parking on both sides of Shady Greens in residents' yards during early boating. And that is without all the other activities that you have planned. There wasn't room for two-way traffic. The current lots are often full just with people enjoying the trails. I know that you have added another parking lot to the plan in this area. According to you, it's about fifty parking spaces. That may help with those using the clubhouse, pickleball courts, and the trails, but ballfields will still be a problem. I have three boys and six grandchildren, so I have attended hundreds of ballgames. Think about it. Each team has ten kids, so twenty kids on a team, on a field, two fields, that's eighty kids. But kids arrive twenty, or kids arrive for the second game before the first game ends. So you have a potential of eighty cars parking at that time during the ballgames. That doesn't count for parents arriving in two cars or grandparents like me. That car, that lot, is fifty spots. Parking for a ballgame should not be where kids have to cross a street, especially so close to the neighborhood entrance. Ballgames are scheduled at the same time residents are coming home from work. Shady Greens will have cars parked along its busiest time, kids running across the street to get to their game. It's an accident waiting to happen.
Ma'am, you are at the three minutes, please.
All right. My last point is taking down the trees on the trail is an environmental sin. That trail is the one that is used most often for those that want to walk during the hot days of summer. They need those trees. If you need baseball fields, buy a field somewhere or put in a four-field one like Wumble Park or Westlake and play ball there. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments. Thank you, folks. Rose, who do you have next on the list?
Virginia Johnson.
Ms. Johnson? Hey, Virginia.
Hey, good evening, everyone. My name is Virginia Johnson. I live at 7120 Deerbrook Street in Willow Springs. I can see the Fuquay Varina city time limit sign from my yard. I'm actually here to talk one. Thank you for having us, let us speak tonight. I love our two downtowns. I love my Saturday morning dates with my husband. When we go to Brew's on Main, we grab a treat from, we have brunch at Brew's on Main's, we grab a treat from Stick Boys. And especially during the summer, we can head down to the Growers Market. I pick up our eggs and veggies. It's my favorite day of the week. I love our Fuquay Varina downtown, and I support creative ideas to bring more people downtown. However, as a mom of a Fuquay Varina high school student, I am concerned about the proximity of the social district to the high school during the school day with students who are in class. In order to walk home from school, many of the students will be walking right through the social district. Some of our students are allowed to leave campus for lunch, and they'd be walking right into a social district where there's open containers of alcohol. We pride ourselves on being a family-friendly downtown, but not all people feel that the presence of alcohol is conducive to a family-friendly environment. Our high school has approximately two thousand students, half of which are new drivers. I was like, who leave school, and they'll be driving right through the social district. I would hate to see a situation where a new driver leaving school who may not see a person who's busy and enjoying a drink and talking to a friend who steps in into the street. That's a situation that would change their lives forever, and I don't want to be a person who would cause that. In a past life, and I was a server, and as we move, and if we move forward with social districts, I would like to see it increase, and the town being responsible for, an increase in the training to all of our servers and waitstaff, in carding and preventing over-serving, and how to address if they do see a violation in the social district, such as handing a drink to someone who's underage. Our servers can be held responsibly legally if they serve someone who unintentionally causes harm to others. And it's our duty to empower our servers with the tools, skills necessary to do their job effectively by offering adequate training and compensating them for that training time. So I just, again, my biggest concerns are the proximity to the high school during the school day. That's not something I want for my son and his friends, and making sure that our servers are trained properly to deal with the situations. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Rose, do you have anybody else?
Mark Bertrand.
Mr. Bertrand?
I'm Mark Bertrand. I lived at 5421 Greens Flag Lane at Crooked Creek. I honestly, gentlemen, after this, I don't have a lot that I can add. Other than to say that it seems like the more that time goes on here, the less and less this is going to be a preserve. We fought so hard to get this to be a park and preserve, and I just can't understand why ballfields and additional parking lots, especially a parking lot on Gomar Lane, really? But ballfields backed right up to the highway, that beautiful patch of woods when you're going down the old number eight and nine, that would have to be destroyed for ballparks. And it's just not right. It's just not right in keeping with the original theme of what this was supposed to be. And I'm sorry, that's all I can say, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Rose? Have anybody next?
Susan Hutchinson.
Ms. Hutchinson?
Susan Hutchinson, 5716 Maggie Ryan Lane, Fuquay Varina. After listening to all the discussion tonight, what I have written, I will change from. I've heard all the community input for the park, but yet I heard no community input for the social distance, social district that has been brought up. I haven't seen any way that the community can take a survey on it, have any input on it. All I saw was that in November the twenty-second, there would be a vote for it. Now, does that mean that five commissioners on the board can vote to make this change in our community without the community really having any input on the impact it will have? That's my question as to how the community can come together and decide what their town will be like.
I'll respond to all comments at the end, ma'am, when everybody's finished speaking tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Rose, do you have anybody else?
Joanne Lang.
Ms. Lang? Joanne Lang? Okay, who do we have next, Rose?
There's a name that I can't read.
Can you read the address, or?
Fifty-five, fifty oh five, and I can't read the.
Did somebody sign up toward the bottom of the sheet that's not got their name called tonight?
Five thousand and five is your first number.
Okay. What you have next, Rose?
Monty Cohen.
Good evening. My name is Monty Cohen. I live at 4720 Lenaria Lane. I've lived there for about nineteen years. And what I've seen absent in tonight's presentation is nothing talking about the environmental impact that's going to become about by doing the development. Where's the environmental impact statements that were done that you've filed? Is it online? Is it something that we can read? I know when the golf course was there, nothing could be changed because of the wetlands, because of the growth, because there was environmental impact, because of trees, because of birds, because of plants. I heard none of that this evening. I happen to know that behind, across the street from where we live, which would be number eight and nine fairways, which is where you're talking about putting ballfields, those were designed to have a runoff area. The water that runs off of there goes down to a catch basin right behind, really right in front of somebody's houses that then comes across the street. If you're going to modify that land, how is that going to affect the seven or eight people's houses that are right there? Where's that water going to go? Secondly, if you change that, how's that going to affect the water that runs behind where I live? That goes behind four or five houses that in the midst of a storm is like a rushing creek? So I just would like to see where you can point me to the environmental impact statements that have been supported and submitted by the people that are going to do this development. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Rose?
Michael Biddle.
Michael?
My name is Mike Biddle, and I'm at 5821 Brushy Meadows Drive in Fuquay. In addition to being a homeowner in the community of Crooked Creek, I'm also the current Homeowners Association Board of Directors President, and I came today to speak on behalf of the community regarding the town preserve proposed master plan. Our community has been impacted greatly by all of the construction around us. In the recent months even, we've seen trucks, tons of traffic, coming through our neighborhood, speeding. We've seen kids almost be hit. We've seen dogs actually be hit. We've had many issues with continued growth. Obviously, we all want to see growth and we want to see expansion in our region. One of the issues that has come up with the community is adding a parking lot at the corner of Gomar Lane, right in the middle of our neighborhood. Imagine waking up in the morning and looking across the street at a parking lot, right in the center of our neighborhood. That's something that we want to have stricken from the plan altogether. Adding a twenty-car parking lot isn't going to make any difference in the amount of traffic that we already receive. People are constantly parking up and down the street. In addition to that parking lot, the one that's directly across from where the pond is, we don't see that having a parking lot put there is going to do anything for our neighborhood. If anything, it's going to create more traffic, loitering, people parking there overnight. We already have a lot of issues with people coming there and fishing, even though they're not supposed to. Police are called constantly. It's become a massive issue already on Brushy Meadows Drive on the south side. Again, we're going to anticipate added traffic issues to both, our community on both sides. Therefore, we request that both these lots be stricken. In addition to that, the ballfields going in on and off Hilltop Needmore Drive with noise, light pollution, added traffic, and additional parking. Close proximity to the homes in the neighborhood is a huge factor and a concern that, including these athletic fields, deter from the quality of, honestly, of the life of our residents. This community has been very peaceful for many years. We love the town preserve. We love the trails. But the idea of a town preserve is just that. It's a preserve. It's not adding additional infrastructure, parking lots, continued growth with people coming in and parking there every single day. Two baseball fields with fifty additional parking lots. If you've ever been to Fleming Loop Park on a Saturday, we know that fifty spots doesn't do anything for anybody. It's still, everybody parking all up and down the street. All this is going to do is just solve a problem for fifty cars, and we're still going to have the same issue by adding two additional ballfields there. So again, speaking on behalf- Um, so again, speaking on behalf of the community, um, as a board member, um, those are two of the main concerns for the community and then speaking on my, uh, on behalf of myself.
You're at three minute mark, sir. Please finish.
Speaking on behalf of myself, um, I also, uh, would love to see these two items stricken from the plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Rose, who do you have next?
The last one, Susan Ioka.
Susan?
Suzanne Ioka, four-seven-zero-one, Shady Greens Drive. I live in the house that's right adjacent to, will, will be the picnic shelter and right next to the clubhouse and if anybody was there for early voting, you will know how much the traffic has affected our neighborhood. Um, I can't speak any more eloquently than the prior folks ahead of me about the congestion. It, right now has been a blessing to our neighborhood, but the, the ball fields and the additional activity are right adjacent to my property, but the traffic issue, Hilltop can't handle it unless you make Hilltop Fort. When, when I go to work in the morning and I'm trying to take a left out of our neighborhood, sometimes coming home that it's like a quarter mile backed up to go to Lake Wheeler Road. It's, it, it just can't handle this much traffic unless you change Hilltop. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am for your comments. Rose, that's it? Okay, thank you everybody for coming here tonight and speaking comments. There are, there are many ways you can provide feedback, uh, to the board. One, you're welcome to email or call any board member up here. You're welcome to attend board meetings. Let's Talk F V is a online platform that's been set up. It's very, very easy. Her comments in regard to that tonight, you're able to make comments about any issue that's going on in town or proposal that the board has made and that's often pushed out there, on there. Um, in regards to, to the social district that was discussed earlier, um, the comment was made, where are the ones that are, are for tonight? Last meeting, just about the same amount of people that are here tonight that spoke, um, in opposition to it, spoke in favor of that and, um, thought the comment was made about businesses. What was the business comments? There was a lot of business comments at the last time in, in private citizens, but that's why the board, uh, a motion was made and a board approved to table it for more public input and that's exactly what this is. So thank you for providing input and continue to provide input to this board right here. It's the next meeting that it's, um, on the agenda to come back at that time. I would expect the board to take action that night, but they may very well choose to, um, table it also again for more information, but, um, continue to have dialogue with board members and, um, and be, be involved right there. So thank you for coming tonight. Um, the Crooked Creek residents and ones in regards to Hilltop Nemoor Town Park and Preserve, thank you for coming tonight too. Um, information's needed. As it was shared, shared, and referring down to notes, as it was shared tonight, there's a lot of feedback that's been going, going into this, uh, facility tonight. It's not a matter of voting on the, on the concept plan. This is a concept. It's a vision. It's going to, to change. What you see tonight isn't, isn't necessary at the next meeting with what gets passed. It could be, uh, it could be tweaked still, but the idea is a vision for the, what the community has seen. This was not, um, the gentleman and ladies sitting in a room and drew something that they had no, no poet comment. Um, over a thousand comments in total were, were prepared for this. And when the county bought the, the part, the old golf course and gave it to Fuquay Varina, there was one condition that was put on there, only one condition. And that condition was that it could be used for any municipal purpose that the town deemed necessarily. Any municipal purpose right there. That's via deed restriction right there. There was conversations of town facilities, town buildings, office, any of that type of stuff could be put there, but instead the, the board at that time and currently still does see the need to make it a town park and preserve, park and preserve. And so what, um, the goal of this board was to do was to make it a, um, a world-class park that people would come and visit from all over, all over Wake County and all over Fuquay Varina. Wake County has granted money to Fuquay Varina to help for the development and the vision of the, of this park. It was never intended when the citizens of Fuquay Varina paid, paid, um, excuse me, the county donated to, to the citizens of Fuquay Varina. The goal was always to have a, um, developed into a world-class park right there. Um, homes, apartments, residential, any kind of residential is not allowed there. So you don't have to worry about that. I know that was a major concern when this discussion first came up when golf course was being sold right there. Um, from a tax standpoint, a comment, a comment was made about paying taxes. They, you're correct, everybody that lives around pays Wake County taxes, but nobody pays town of Fuquay Varina tax dollars and that's what we're talking about being spent on this facility here. So there's a lot of feedback that goes in to this facility. Um, a, the vision, the environmental impact, the, the next step after this vision that gets, um, determined in the future is an environmental study. State law does not allow you to create any new additional runoff. You must, must collect runoff and so that environmental study will be done and that feasibility study will be done and it will tell what's required to be done in regards to that. So right now, it's just a big vision idea right there. It's getting feedback to be changed right there. Um, I appreciate your comments tonight and, um, everybody wants to be heard and so we don't allow any meeting, um, hooting and hollering and clapping, no matter what the issue is in regards to that. So thank you for being respectful tonight and thank you for your, your time tonight. Next item on our agenda will be, will be a public hearing in regards to item seven A, Town Code Amendment, Town of Fuquay Varina Land Development Ordinance, Amendment Number Twenty-One, CTA two-zero-two-two dash zero-seven. More information about this agenda item will be presented by Planning Director Davison.
Thank you. I am submitting the agenda abstract and supporting documents into the records of the town. The purpose of this agenda item is to consider a proposed text amendment to the Town Code of Ordinances, Part Nine, Land Development Ordinance, that addresses several areas for improvement. Town staff and the community have gained significant experience using the Land Development Ordinance since its adoption in December twenty sixteen and a better understanding of its intent and proper function. As a result, this amendment seeks to harness that experience in the form of clarifications and technical corrections to the LDO's language. The proposed changes are as follows. Section one, Article E, Floating Zoning Districts. An edit has been made to correct the district's NMU, UMU to CMU and EMU per CTA twenty-twenty-two oh-four. These were items that were missed previously. Section two, Article F, Use Regulations. Edits have been made to the permitted use table and included as Attachment A. The edits include the addition of the convenience store use in TCR and RMU with the caveat that neither zoning district will permit gas pumps as an accessory use to the convenience store use. Language to this effect has been added to the convenience store use standards. The removal of personal service use from all zoning districts. The personal service use has been reorganized into its separate elements to modernize it and improve ease of use. The term and its usage have been corrected throughout the LDO, specifically in Articles F and S. The flex space use has been removed from the CC and HI zoning districts as it was deemed inappropriate due to the intensity of the use. The home occupation use has been added to the ONI zoning district to allow for legal non-conforming residences to have home occupations in the ONI zoning district as they do in the commercial zoning districts. Language to this effect has been added in the home occupation use standards. The section referenced for vertical mixed use has been corrected. It previously referenced the special events section and now directs the user to the three appendices where vertical mixed use is permitted. Vertical mixed use has been added as an allowable use in the general commercial zoning district. Language has been added to the townhouse development section to permit some alley-loaded lots to front onto open space as long as pedestrian access is provided to the front of the lot. Edits have been made throughout the LDO to clarify and better differentiate between the term accessory buildings and accessory structures. Historically, these terms have been used interchangeably, which has led to user confusion. The term accessory building shall now only be used in reference to the sale of accessory structures and the term accessory structure shall refer to any structure subordinate to a primary structure that is required to meet the North Carolina Building Code. This correction has been made throughout the LDO, specifically in Articles G, F, S, and Appendix B. Language has been added to the use standards for flex space that better defines the use in the two permissible districts. Facade requirements have been removed as they are established more appropriately in Article H. Allowances for ceiling heights have been separated by zoning district. Language regarding the conversion of an existing building to flex space and language about the applicability of the standards for flex space have been removed as they were deemed unnecessary. Unallowed home occupation use has been changed from barber shop beauty salon to salon and the definition for which has been clarified. Language has been added to this section that exempts remote work from home jobs from a home occupation permit. Section three, Article G, Lot and Structure Provisions. The accessory building, accessory structure clarification has been continued in this section. Edits have been made to both the rear yard zoning lot setback and the side yard zoning setback tables to clarify which portions of an in-ground pool should be included in the calculations for setbacks included herein as attachments B and C. A clerical error has been corrected in Section nine dash thirteen oh-three where the word barbed was spelled barb. Section four, Article H, Building Type and Architectural Standards. Language allowing for an applicant to request an administrative adjustment in the event an existing building is being added onto or renovated and the applicant proposes to exceed the forty percent allowed to match individual elements of the existing structure to provide design continuity. The section regarding facade materials has been reorganized for modernization and ease of use. Certain types of high-quality metal panels have been added to the permitted preliminary facade material section. Language has been added to this section clarifying when parapets are required on non-residential buildings. The shopping center standards have been reorganized for clarity and ease of use. Standards have also been added to this section to encourage a higher quality of facade for shopping centers. An error that included hip roofs and the restriction on the ends of roofs facing a public right-of-way has been corrected and an option to request an exception for the end of a gable roof to face a right-of-way with additional primary facade elements has been added. The section on permissible colors on non-residential buildings has been amended to remove the percentage. The remaining language was deemed sufficient to achieve the intended result. The section on industrial building facades has been amended to remove the requirement for rear facades that face a residential zoning district to meet the primary building facade standards. As a fifty-foot buffer is required between industrial and residential uses, staff feels that is sufficient to screen an industrial building and therefore enhanced facades are not required. Section five, Article one, sorry, I, Environmental Protection Standards. Language in Section nine dash fourteen oh-seven Soil, Erosion and Sediment Control and Article S Interpretations and Definitions has been revised to reflect updates required by the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. These revisions reflect changes made to the North Carolina Administrative Code as well as improvements and clarifications. Section six, Article J, Subdivision Regulations. Language has been added to Section nine dash fourteen fifty-eight that permits subdivision in the case that the future lot would only have access to a private right-of-way or permanent access easement. This exception allows for minor subdivision of lots with frontage on existing private roads in the ETJ. Section seven, Article M, Thoroughfares, Drainage and Utility Standards. Language has been added that allows the town to require connections to public utilities in a limited number of cases that are established in the section. This is based on an update to the North Carolina General Statutes. Language has also been added to Section nine dash sixteen fifteen that allows wells instead of connection to the public water supply in very, very limited cases. This is also based on an update to the North Carolina General Statutes. Section eight, Article N, Parking, Loading and Lighting Design Standards. Language has been added to Section nine dash sixteen fifty-three that provides uses in the heavy industrial zoning district, the ability to locate parking in the front of the primary structure in exchange for an increased landscape buffer. The separation of front employee parking and rear loading areas better aligns with accepted industrial configurations. The parking occupancy rate table and all references to it have been removed. This table has not been as useful as originally intended and created conflicts within the shared parking section. Language has been added that would also allow a project to apply for administrative adjustment to reduce the number of parking bays normally required if it can be proven that the parking is not required due to the availability of shared parking with another use or property. Language has been added that would allow a project to request an administrative adjustment to apply a different parking calculation for the use if it can be justified that the requested parking calculation is more applicable to the proposed use. Section nine, Article O, Landscaping and Tree Protection Standards. Section nine dash seventeen oh-two has been rewritten and reorganized to simplify the requirements and provide for ease of use. This section is one of the most heavily used by both staff and the public and the intention of the rewrite is to clarify any confusion in the interpretation of the section. Section ten, Article Q, Procedures and Administration. The requirement for the neighborhood meeting in both zoning map amendment section and the special use permit section has been amended to prohibit the holding of the neighborhood meeting before the formal submittal has been made to staff. Language has been added to the annexation and preliminary major subdivision plat procedure sections that require the submittal of the petition to include all items as listed on the application. This has been the standard practice of staff and is now proposed to be codified. The master plan procedures section has been modified and cleaned up to modernize its requirements. As the use of master plans expands, the language of its requirements needed to be updated. An error in the variance procedures section has been amended where it originally indicated the Cape Fear River Basin. It has been amended to indicate the Neuse River Basin. Section eleven, Article S, Interpretations and Definitions. The definitions containing references to accessory structures and/or accessory buildings have been updated according to the amendments made to the rest of the LDO. A definition for accessory buildings sale has been added. Chickens have been removed from the agricultural animals definition as there are separate use standards for residential chicken coops. The definitions containing references to the personal service use have also been updated according to the amendments made to the rest of the LDO. And a definition for salon spa has been added. In Section twelve, Appendix A, DC one and DC two form-based districts, several edits have been made to Appendix A included herein as Attachment E. The two sections for DC one and DC two have been combined and the differences between the two districts are now indicated under their particular subheading. Section thirteen, Appendix B, RMU, CMU and EMU form-based districts. An edit has been made to correct an effective date that was erroneously listed as June sixth, twenty-twenty-two with the approval of CTA twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two four. Edits related to the updates made to the accessory structure and accessory buildings are included herein and the requirement for reverse angled parking in the CS one-hundred dash ninety dash sixty road assembly has been removed. Section fourteen, Appendix E, Certifications. A certification for annexations with provision for municipal water services upon owner extension of water and sewer service has been added. Management and staff recommend approval of the proposed Town Code Amendment. It is reasonable and in the best interest as it improves upon the land development ordinance's intent to modernize, provide sustainability and allows for ease of use and enforcement specifically concerning the town's current standards. At the October seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two regular meeting, the planning board unanimously voted to rec-amend approval. The motion tonight is to approve CTA twenty-twenty-two oh-seven, Amendment Number Twenty-One. An amendment to the Town Code of Ordinances, Part Nine, Land Development Ordinance, as presented and recommended by town staff. The text amendment improves upon the land development ordinance and is reasonable in the best interest of the public for the reasons identified by management and staff. I know there was a bunch, but I am available to answer any questions if you have.
Director Davison, you did a great job. Thank you for that information right there. You did a good job. Okay. The hearing is now open. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of the Land Development Ordinance Amendment Number Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the Land Development Ordinance Amendment Number Twenty-One? The hearing is now closed. Pam, it's a lot of time that goes through that and that's the, um, it took six page, you have six pages of amendments from, from the last one each time because you are working hard at reviewing in regards to that changes. Um, I know you mentioned this was a lot of formality and technical or, or correction and their punctuation, things like that. Uh, was there any substantial change, substantial changes from where we are now?
Um, a, a lot of it was simplification, um, in several of the sections, the, the shopping center for one, DC one and two, um, was another section that, um, there were a lot of repetitive standards, um, that we basically were able to mesh together, potentially increase the, what we're looking for as far as requirements.
I know a lot of, um, non-residential growth has been the, the topic of conversation often. Um, there's nothing in here that's going to hinder, hinder that or change that direction?
No, in fact, there's several items on this one that actually we have put in, um, allowable administrative adjustments to allow for flexibility. Um, I think the parking standards, some of the facade standards and things like that when, um, specifically related to existing buildings that are expanding, um, either their buildings or their campuses, um, we had some very stark numbers that. We had some very stark numbers that forty percent, that if, if your addition or expansion was less than forty percent, you could match the existing building, but if it was over forty percent, you're required to meet all today's standards. So, so we've put in some, some allowances there that you can kind of pick and choose, maybe your roof angles, you know, to be consistent to the facility as is. And again, picking your parking standards, you know, if, if this is a use that maybe more is an assembly use but in a commercial area, you know, with justification, you can show us that the, the parking of a, of different use is more applicable. I think it builds a lot of flexibility into both proposed and existing uses, commercial.
Thank you. Any other board members have any questions or, or comments? Yes, sir.
And I, this is my own ignorance. I just, it just went, and I just jumped out at me. Page four, Section seven, Article M, language was added that allows wells instead of connection to public water supplies. What does that, just what does that mean? That just threw me full loop. I was following you pretty well till you got that one. I just didn't know what it meant.
Um, so this comes right out of the North Carolina State Statute. They have an allowance that if a property has not been developed, even if water is available, so we, we had that standard that if you were within two thousand five hundred feet of existing water, you had to connect. So this is an allowance. Our commercial zoning districts also have a requirement that you have to hook up to public utilities, so this would only apply specifically to our residential zoning districts and any of those uses allowed through special use permits, so churches, potentially in a residential zoning district that might not want to hook on to public water. If they could provide a single well, they're allowed to have a single well as permitted by the state statute.
And that's by state statute?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. That was, that just jumped out at me and I just didn't quite understand it. Thank you for that explanation.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve CTA dash twenty twenty-two dash oh seven, Amendment number twenty-one, an amendment to the Town Code of Ordinances, Part Nine, Land Development Ordinance, as presented and recommended by town staff. The text amendment improves upon the land development ordinance and is reasonable and in the best interest of the public for the reasons identified by management and staff.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is item seven B, Voluntary Annexation Petition, New Providence Baptist Church, four eight one three and four eight oh seven, Hilltop Needmore Road, ANX two zero two two dash ten. More information about this item will be presented by Planning Director Davison.
I'm submitting the agenda abstract and supporting documents into the official records of the town. The purpose of this agenda item is to consider an annexation ordinance extending the corporate limits of the town of Fuquay Varina following receipt of a petition for voluntary annexation of property owned by New Providence Baptist Church located at four eight one three and four eight oh seven Hilltop Needmore Road, pins zero six eight seven five four five seven three six and zero six eight seven five four nine seven zero nine, containing approximately nine point seven three three acres, and to approve the declaration of annexation agreement signed by the property owner. The property is non-contiguous to the town's corporate limits containing nineteen point seven three three acres. Town water is available, but sewer is not available to the property. A fire flow test was conducted resulting in inadequate fire flow of one thousand two hundred eighty gallons per minute. The subject property will not be served with town garbage and recycling services as it is a religious institution. The petitioner has signed an annexation agreement as it relates to the provision of town services. At the October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting, the town board instructed the town clerk to investigate the sufficiency of the applicant's petition for voluntary annexation. The town clerk certified at that time that the petition was sufficient and meets the requirements prescribed by the North Carolina General Statutes. The town board also adopted a resolution setting the public hearing for the November seventh, twenty twenty-two town board meeting. There is a fiscal note to this one. The present property value is one million nine hundred eighty-two thousand and ninety-three dollars. The motion tonight is to adopt the annexation ordinance to extend the corporate limits of the town of Fuquay Varina to include property owned by New Providence Baptist Church, ANX twenty twenty-two ten, and to approve the declaration of annexation agreement as presented and recommended.
Thank you, Pam. The hearing is now open. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of the voluntary annexation petition?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I'm Wayne Malden with Malden Waking Survey in one thirty-nine North Main Street here in Fuquay. And we put this rezoning or annexation, excuse me, together just got for you tonight. Basically, the church is growing like everything else around Fuquay. The congregation is getting huge, and it's been operating on a well that sits out there right next to the parking lot for as long as I've been here, fifty, sixty years. So we need some more water. That's why we're asking for the annexation is to hook on to the sea to water. If you never have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer. All right, thank you.
I think we're good right now. Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you.
That's a pretty church. Does anyone else wish to speak in favor of the voluntary annexation petition? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the voluntary annexation petition? The hearing is now closed. Any discussion by the board? What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Mayor, I'm just glad to get this, I was contacted, I guess, originally, month, it was probably been a, yeah, months ago, almost a year ago, about from some of the deacons and trustees of the church who, they've been like he's, like, they've been working on wastewater and the church, sides of the church, most churches can't even handle that at that time, and it's just good. And they've literally sat there and watched the pipelines being put, and they were asking every month, every few weeks, is it, is it here yet? Is it here yet? So it's good to see that we got water to them and, you know, especially being one of our oldest churches in Fuquay Varina. I think that's a, a good thing.
Hey, it's a great-looking church, and they've expanded it over the years. If you're look, looking at air, you can tell how big it is, the amount of parking space that they have there. That's good. You want to make, you want to make the motion then, Brian?
I just want to, how far do they have to go to tie in? Is it right along?
It goes, line goes all the way down Hilltop Needmore Road. Yeah.
Okay. It doesn't go very far.
Yeah. Well, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt the annexation ordinance to extend the corporate limits of the town of Fuquay Varina to include property owned by the New Providence Baptist Church, ANX twenty twenty-two ten, and to approve the declaration of annexation agreement as presented and recommended.
Got a motion and a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. That's good one. Next item on our agenda is our final public hearing, Voluntary Annexation Petition, six nine one zero and zero Kenny Beck Road, ANX two zero two two dash eleven. More information about this item will be presented by Director Davison.
Thank you.
Last one tonight for you, Pam.
No, it's not. I'm picking one up for Matt later, so, at most. Last public here.
Ah, yeah, yeah, last public here.
I'm submitting the official agenda abstract and supporting documents into the records of the town. The purpose of this agenda item is to consider an annexation ordinance extending the corporate limits of the town of Fuquay Varina following receipt of a petition for voluntary annexation of property owned by Christine Cutter located at sixty-nine ten and zero Kennebec Road, Willow Springs, pins zero six eight seven one two zero two three two and zero six eight seven zero two eight four three six, containing approximately four point one two seven acres, and to approve the declaration of annexation agreement. The property is non-contiguous to the town's corporate limits containing four point one two seven acres. Town water is available, but sewer is not available to the property. A fire flow test was conducted resulting in inadequate fire flow of one thousand three hundred fifty-eight gallons per minute. The subject property will be served with town's garbage and recycling service. The petitioner has signed an agreement, annexation agreement as it relates to the provision of town services. At the October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting, the town board instructed the town clerk to investigate the sufficiency of the applicant's petition for voluntary annexation. The town clerk certified at the time the petition was sufficient and meets the requirements prescribed by the North Carolina General Statutes. The town board also has adopted a resolution setting the public hearing for the November seventh, twenty twenty-two November town board meeting. Fiscal note is the present value of the property is two hundred and ninety-one thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars. The motion tonight is to adopt the annexation ordinance to extend the corporate limits of the town of Fuquay Varina to include property owned by Christine Cutter located at sixty-nine oh one and zero Kennebec Road, pins zero six eight seven zero two eight four three six and zero six eight seven one two oh two three two, annexation twenty-two eleven, and to approve the declaration of the annexation agreement as presented and recommended.
Thank you, Pam. The hearing is now open. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of the voluntary annexation petition?
Again, Mayor, board members, I'm Wayne Malden with Malden Waking Survey in at one thirty-nine North Main Street here in Fuquay. And we put this annexation together for you tonight. Ms. Cutter, if you've been by this area, she stays in the old farmhouse. It's been there probably seventy-five, a hundred years, as long as I can remember. She also owns the land across the road to the south of Kenny Beck Road. I think there's three or four lots in there that are currently in the town's jurisdiction and have water and have been annexed. The main reason for annexing where she's at at this point is her well is terrible. It has gone dry about three times this year already, and the water is right on Kenny Beck Road, was put in when we did Kenny Beck Meadows, so she would like to hook on to the water and quit messing with the well that's giving her trouble all the time. If you never have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Does anyone else wish to speak in favor of the voluntary annexation petition? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the voluntary annexation petition? The hearing is now closed. Any discussion by the board? What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We adopt the annexation ordinance to extend corporate limits of the town of Fuquay Varina to include property owned by Christine Cutter located at sixty-nine oh one and zero Kennebec Road and to approve the declaration of annexation agreements presented and recommended.
Second. Got a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. What is the board's pleasure on the items on the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items eight A through eight E as presented and recommended.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
You have a motion and second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Let's remove consent agenda. Pam, this is what you're getting excited about. Our first administrative report tonight is item ten A, a fee in lieu for Wake Med, Wake Med Medical Office Building, Fuquay Varina Parkway. More information about this agenda item will be presented by Planning Director Davison.
That's my grand finale. Submitting the agenda abstract and supporting documents in the official records of the town. The purpose of this agenda item is to consider approval of a fee in lieu for the Fuquay Varina Parkway roadway improvements related to the Wake Med Medical Office Building, projected in the amount of six hundred thousand fifty-five and two hundred dollars. The Wake Med Medical Office Project is located at twenty-four hundred North Main Street, US four oh one. The site development requires paying a fee in lieu for the intended thoroughfare improvements for the future Fuquay Varina Parkway construction. The proposed improvements include widening US four oh one between Meadow Drive and Dwight Roland Road and partially constructing the Fuquay Varina Parkway. In addition, the fee in lieu will pay for future improvements for the remainder of the Fuquay Varina Parkway section adjacent to the development site. These improvements will include the installation of roadway pavement and all associated grading, curb, gutter, and median improvements, widening of the adjacent sidewalk to a ten-foot side path, storm drainage improvements, and street lighting. The fee in lieu will also cover all associated environmental and regulatory permitting costs. The town requires the improvements in accordance with the land development ordinance. Section nine dash fourteen sixty-six of the land development ordinance allows for a fee in lieu for improvements that cannot be feasibly completed at the time of development. Management and staff consider the proposed improvements, which will be completed, sufficient for the interim function of the affected public facilities and appropriate considering limitations. The developer will complete the proposed improvements and agrees to pay the fee in lieu of six hundred fifty-five thousand two hundred dollars. The design of the fee in lieu improvements and the corresponding cost estimate was completed in compliance with the LDO by the developer's engineer and included in the required, includes the required twenty-five percent contingency for fee in lieu payments. This cost estimate has been certified by the developer's engineer and reviewed by the town engineering director to ensure completeness and appropriate costs. A copy of the referenced cost estimate is attached based on the provided details and certifications by the town, the town's engineering department. Management and staff recommend accepting the project's fee in lieu for six hundred thousand fifty-five and two hundred dollars. The fiscal note, yes, a fee in lieu for the amount of six thousand fifty-five, I'm like really messing up these numbers today, sorry, six thousand fifty, six hundred fifty-five thousand two hundred dollars represents the engineer's cost estimate for roadway improvements and associated with the Wake Medical Office Buildings Project. This estimate includes a twenty-five percent contingency which is consistent with the town's fee in lieu roadway policy. The six thousand, six hundred fifty-five thousand two hundred dollar fee in lieu will be placed into the town's northeast roadway fee in lieu district account. The motion tonight is to prove a total of six hundred fifty-five thousand two hundred as a fee in lieu for the Wake, for the Fuquay Varina Parkway Road improvements associated with the Wake Med Medical Office Building Project as presented and recommended.
Thank you, Director Davison. The, our fee in lieu in, lieu in these different pockets, I know over the past year we have approved several locations, I didn't necessarily collected the money yet because it's projects that have to be built, but these are going to give us some opportunities for some really great projects, be meaningful products in the future. Right there, so that's good. I'm sure we can all think of several of those. Any other comments by board members? If not, entertain a motion. By the way, when, when do we think Wake Med's going to open?
So they, through a developer agreement, they actually have gotten started, so they are under construction right now. I'm not sure what their opening date is, but their site plan is approved and they are, the pre-con has happened and they are out there moving dirt.
That's great. I'm very excited about this. Thank you, Director. Entertainer motion. Any other comments?
Love comment, but this is great. Thanks for the community.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, I approve, I'd like to move that we approve the total of six hundred fifty-five thousand two hundred dollars as a fee in lieu for, for Fuquay Varina Parkway roadway improvements associated with the Wake Med Medical Office Building Project as presented and recommended.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. First item of, excuse me, other business tonight, first item of other business is manager's report. Mr. Manager?
Excuse me, thank you, Mayor. Just a few things to update the board on since our last town board meeting. The police department has conducted its last conditional offer, filling all vacancies, which is a testament to our policing efforts and our community engagement. To my knowledge, we are the only law enforcement agency in Wake County right now that is fully staffed or has made offers to fully staff all positions. So something that not every, or really any other law enforcement agency in this county can, can speak to. Additionally, the department has made significant strides during the North Carolina League of Municipalities Risk Assessment Review, and we'll be presenting more information to the town board about that at an upcoming meeting, but some great advancement has occurred for, for that effort. As it pertains to our human resources department, we've wrapped up performance appraisals for the entire organization, which is a tall task, and PTRC, if you'll recall, they're the same organization that helped us with our compensation and benefit study this past year, and of course, the town board through the budgeting process dedicated the, the funds to continue to assess annually compensation and benefits against the market. So they are currently conducting that market assessment, and we'll be presenting information about that at the town board retreat. Pertaining to our fire department, we've had a training exercise at Fleming, or we're going to be having a training exercise, excuse me, at Fleming Loop Park on this Wednesday from eight AM to noon. We're going to have a simulated small engine plane crash in the parking lot at the park. There's going to be several participating fire departments and police, and Wake County agencies, including EMS, emergency management, and fire services, and there will be some other out-of-county agencies participating as well, Hernet County Fire and EMS. So you never know when a situation like that may occur, and we want to make sure that we're prepared in the event that it does. Additionally, the fire department has had some recent career ladder moves. Bradley Hatcher has moved from a firefighter two to a senior firefighter, meeting all of the criteria for Bradley Hatcher has moved from a firefighter two to a senior firefighter, meeting all of the criteria for that career ladder advancement, and Jeremy Packard from a firefighter one to a firefighter two. We've recently hired two new employees in our IT department. Maxwell, uh, Batorf is an IT technician, and Max Kersling is a GIS technician. So we got two new Maxes in the IT department. That'll be fun trying to keep them, uh, figured out which one's which. Finance, the town was recently, and I think I made the entire board aware of this, but for the public's benefit, the town was recently awarded the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award from the Government Finance Officers Association. Uh, this is GFOA's highest award to recognize state and local governments that prepare budget documents of the very highest quality that reflect both the guidelines established by the National Advisory Council on State and Local Budgeting, and GFOA's best practices on budgeting, and then recognize individual governments to succeed in achieving that goal. Approximately eighteen hundred governments, including states, cities, counties, special districts, school districts, and more, have been recognized for their transparency in budgeting, and we're one of those organizations. To earn this recognition, budget documents must meet program criteria and excel as a policy document, financial plan, and operations guide, and a communication tool, which ours checks all the boxes. So very proud of the work, uh, in our finance department to help us achieve this, this designation. Public Works, William Burnett started today working in the debris collections department, so we wanna welcome him to our team. The Art Center recently hired Sophia Diaz and Carrie Passfield as part-time theater technical crew members. So you might see them if you're taking a show or an event at the, at the theater. Sugar Skull had a great audience on Friday for a lively musical that was centered around Dia de los Muertos, the Day of the Dead. Also on Friday, Massengill Design Build Gallery held an opening reception for Burrit Benson's Be the Light exhibit that will be featured through December thirty-first. And if you know of anyone that would like to explore their acting talents, uh, a call for auditions is open until December fifth for the community theater presentation of Bakersville, A Sherlock Holmes Mystery. So encourage if you know of anybody who wants to, uh, advance their acting chops, tell them to try out for that play. Uh, Economic Development Department, many of you were, you're all aware, but many of you attended. On October twenty-seventh, the town's Economic Development Department successfully held the Small Business Connect, consisting of proxy, of, uh, of several participants. The event focused on small business resources from both public and private sectors. I jabboled on Tiffany for, uh, for getting that event kicked off. I think it was well received, and we've gotten a lot of good feedback on that so far. I've personally been, uh, participating in the North Carolina League of Municipalities Legislative Policy Committee. Uh, this is, uh, I don't know how many years I've done this out of twenty, but, uh, I've been involved in, in this process with a number of different managers and elected officials from around the state to help the league, uh, develop some recommended policies that will eventually go to the league, league board of directors for approval to establish as a, uh, policy, uh, goal list to discuss with legislators in the next legislative session. So, uh, that work continues through this fall, and, um, we'll be ready for, uh, when the General Assembly, um, gets back to work. Uh, Mayor Massengill and I attended a meeting with our, uh, financial auditors with the town, uh, a week or so ago to, um, uh, just discuss the process of the audit and, uh, for the mayor to, uh, share his and the board's understanding of our financial position. We shared with the auditor that the board receives quarterly financial updates on where the town's financial position is along the way with several budget amendments throughout, uh, various board meetings. So you, that the board is being kept up to date and abreast of how the town is financially doing. Of course, we spent a lot of time talking about it at our annual retreat, uh, leading up to budget workshop and the budget development process. And finally, I think we had a very successful downtown, or finally, other than some things that are on the agenda already, very successful downtown trick-or-treat, uh, right before Halloween. Uh, it was well-attended, a lot of families, kids, uh, up and down the streets here in downtown, getting candy. Uh, Mayor Massengill and Mayor Massengool passed out, uh, candy in front of Town Hall. Um, it was the, the kind of the before and after of, of what to expect from the mayor, uh, long-term. So if you didn't get to see those pictures, uh, encourage you to go online and take a look at those.
It was fierce competition about who had the best hair.
Uh, well, I think if we did a survey, we would find that out, but we won't do that this time. Uh, but it was a nice event, and I think the community, uh, enjoyed that. In addition, uh, you've got some items on your, uh, in your agenda, project status report. Again, encourage you to review, uh, the items on that project status report to see, uh, where things are in the, in the progression schedule. Additionally, the Fuquay Varina Downtown Association has its Barbecue Blues and Brews Festival this Saturday, November twelfth, twelve PM to four PM. This will be on the Varina side, the Varina District, four oh-five East Broad Street. Christmas tree lighting will take place, uh, on Thursday, December first, at six PM. We hope to have a great event for the tree lighting ceremony. And then we are going to, and this is a, a first announcement, but on December third, we're gonna have a tacky sweater party in downtown Fuquay Varina. So if you don't have your tacky sweaters already, go ahead and, uh, and, uh, get them lined up. See who has the, the best tacky Christmas sweater in Fuquay Varina. This will be on December third, Saturday, eleven to the, eleven AM to three PM. We're gonna have a live band. The band Crush is gonna be here to play some great music. Um, and we will have, uh, twelve PM to three PM food trucks, uh, local vendors, Rockwall, and that's when the tacky sweater contest will happen as well. So just trying to enhance our events, uh, in downtown around the holiday season. The Fuquay Varina Chamber of Commerce, the next day, will have its annual Christmas parade, because we have four PM. Coffee with a Cop, Absurality, uh, on two oh-one South Main Street will be December sixth. That's a Tuesday from nine AM to ten thirty AM. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I don't have any more comments. I'm happy to answer any questions that town board members may have.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Commissioner Gardner, you have any member comments tonight?
No, nothing except I, I enjoyed the trick-or-treat in Halloween also, as Minnie Mouse.
Oh, yeah.
It was a lot of fun.
It was a fun, great event. Thank you. Commissioner Harris, any comments?
Uh, just a quick comment. This, uh, past Wednesday, had I had a chance to make a presentation to the Fuquay Varina Leadership Academy along with, with, uh, Chief of Police. And, uh, I presented the findings from the North Carolina League of Municipalities Task Force on racial equity and local elected officials. Uh, I'm, I was co-chair of the task force, so we provided information in regards to the challenges of those of us who are elected in regards to promoting racial equity. So that went well. And then next week, I think Commissioner Haynes and I were going to Kansas City to the National City Summit there. And, uh, that's a national event that will, uh, allow all, I think it will welcome over five thousand elected officials, cities and city, uh, mayors and councilmen from all over the country to meet there and to go through workshops and have trainings and mobile workshops where we can see what other communities are doing, addressing issues that we currently are dealing with as well. That's it.
Good, good. Thank you, Commissioner Harris, for that. Commissioner Haynes?
Uh, just a few things. Um, I don't even know what it was, but anyway, everything runs together these days. But, um, the southern, southern regional, uh, they had a southern regional resource event at Lincoln Heights, which was very well-attended. It had, um, resources from all over Wake County, um, including, uh, police department was there. We had, uh, they had, um, trailers that were giving kids, uh, free dental exams, uh, free health exams. Uh, they had, um, any type of resource from churches, from, uh, anything that anybody needs for resources. That was a very well-attended, uh, I missed the first part, um, but they said that the line was so long trying to get into the event when it first started. And it was, uh, people coming from, um, even Harnett County who were coming over to find out what resources they, uh, have, free resources in the town, in the town as well as our county. Um, barbecue blues and brews, I'm just gonna be cooking a pig out there to have a good time. Um, I added a new person to my crew for this event that nobody knows until tonight. Uh, Chief Medina will be on the crew with me this, uh, weekend, so we gonna have a good time and enjoy ourselves and, uh, hopefully have some good barbecue. Um, and then, um, also, um, I did attend the Small Business Expo. I will say it was very, uh, very informative for people who are starting small businesses and people who have been small business owners and, um, needed those resources. Because oftentimes, small businesses, when people start, they don't technically go the right way. So they have to backtrack to get everything, especially financially right, uh, to make sure they are profitable. Um, I think one of the key things that came out of that was when a gentleman asked, you know, I wanna start a small business and, um, wanna start a small business, um, and, you know, I work a full-time job. And the main thing everybody on the panel said is, keep your job. So, so thank you Tiffany for, uh, he, he was like, we can't loan money to somebody who doesn't have a full-time payment. So it, I mean, it was really good. Um, and, um, um, also, you know, Pine Acres is collecting food donations. We have our big Thanksgiving giveaway, um, uh, November the nineteenth, uh, from, um, ten to twelve. So we'll be trying to, we'll at least be feeding at least three hundred families that day in the town of Fuquay Varina. Um, turkeys have gotten so high, so we had to do some, uh, diff, different options because turkeys are running around thirty to forty dollars a turkey right now, for a fourteen-pound turkey. So we had to make some, uh, some provisions, but we're still gonna make sure all our families in Fuquay Varina are fed. Oh, and one last thing, uh, actually, uh, the, uh, um, high school is having their first HBCU College and Career Expo, uh, on, uh, November the tw, November nineteenth from ten AM to two PM. And they'll be having resources and events and having, I think, step teams and different things going on that day at the high school.
Willow Springs High School?
Yeah.
Yes. When did you say you're cook, cooking that food or you're packing the meals to give to people to cook?
Uh, packing meals to give to cook.
Okay, I guess.
So we're accepting non-perishable.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Commissioner Haynes. Commissioner Cook?
Uh, just a couple of things. I also attended the Small Business Expo as a small business owner. Uh, it was enlightening. I wish I would've known a lot of this before starting my business. Uh, so hopefully, uh, we will continue this and it will, um, it will continue to help grow our small businesses. I met my neighbor. I didn't even know that he was starting a small business, um, but I seen him at the expo and started talking to him. Um, it was, it was really well-attended, really well-put-together for the first event, so I'd like to see that happen again. Uh, I attended the Bojangles Coffee with a Cop last week. That was really well-attended. Um, look forward to those each month. And then this Saturday, before you go get barbecue, um, come over to the Chamber of Commerce. We're having a free shred event, and we are, um, taking all your, your paper for free, but we are asking for a small food donation, which will be going to the Pine Acres Community Center for their Thanksgiving, um, food distribution. So from nine to twelve, Chamber of Commerce, drop off your, your food and your shredding, and then go get some of, um, go get some of Commissioner Haynes' wonderful barbecue. Uh, that's where I will be as soon as we're done. That is all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cook. The man knows how to cook. And look forward to eating his food, along with some others on Saturday. The man knows how to cook. Mayor Professor Smith, any comments?
All this talk about barbecue, um, myself and Chief Medina, along with, uh, one of our former commissioners, Charlie Eckhart, got to participate as barbecue judges for the American Legion. That was a lot of fun. So, uh, I've never turned down a chance for barbecue, and, and I have to agree, Commissioner Haynes did a great job with it. A couple si, more serious items, I guess. They had a ribbon cutting at Staples that we had the opportunity to go to, that we went to, I think Commissioner Gardner was there. And it was just a grand reopening, and they've redone their business, and they've really tried to focus on the small business community in, in town to kind of be the, the go-to people to help do the mailings and the printings, because a lot of people have that kind of overhead in their business. And it was just remarkable what they've done. I, I enjoyed that a lot. Also got to attend the Hometown Hero Event, uh, John Hester Chevalier, that Mayor Masco had a speaking part in. And also, uh, the town manager mentioned that our police department has at least full staff through all their conditional offers. Uh, that's remarkable. Uh, I, um, I still teach some at BLAT at Wake Tech. I'm teaching right now at the night class. Had to get them to move the schedule so I could be at this meeting tonight. I'll be back out there tomorrow night. It's a nine-month night class. We only have ten attendees for all the municipalities and sheriff departments and even some state agencies here in Wake County. And everybody's competing for these candidates. And I think it's remarkable in that very competitive field, chief, that we're fully, fully staffed. Um, and I think that's a testament to you, your staff, the recruiting we're doing, and, uh, the, the, just the style of police department that we have, that people flock into us when they could go to all these other... Like I say, there's very few graduates for the police departments to choose from out there, and we're not out there fighting for them because we, we're fully staffed. I think that's remarkable, and congratulations on that achievement. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, sir. You know, we're talking about all this good barbecue out there. I'll, I'll mention at the same time that the, um, Legion also had a chili cook-off, and we, uh, went and judged that too. And that was fun.
The chief wants the chief to eat on all.
The chief, all the chief does when he's not working is eat, by the way. So that's, that's what he does. We enjoy that, but the, um, the chili was, was fun too, though. Um, a few other com, comments on the topic of, of food. I've been having lunch at some of the local elementary schools. They've invited me to have lunch with them, and so that's been nice, Bill, to go and talk to them. And what the topic's been really is learning that gu, that government and elected officials and all of us are not scary people. We're, you know, we're elementary school at one point, and so there's been a lot of, um, good interaction with those, those children too at the same time. The Debris Department, I want to thank the Debris Department, Tracy, for helping me with the mayor's chat video last month, for this month to air, or last week, for this month to air. And they, um, got to ride on, on the truck with Charles for a while that morning too, and those guys work hard. And the amount of houses they're hitting and, and the work that they're doing. I had done sanitation in the spring, but now getting to do debris in the fall really, really, um, is helpful and eye-opening. It's something I would, I wish that, uh, citizens could, could ride, or not that you want everybody calling you every day, Tracy, but could understand the work that goes into it so that, because the video talks about how to put your debris out. And sometimes you look at it, it's like, well, what's, why does it really matter that much? Well, the deal is they're picking up hundreds of houses, and so that makes a difference right there. And then you look at one house, well, why does, why does this house, what's the situation here? It's because it's just time is what it takes so much longer. And I think that a lot of people will be more, hopefully watching the video, are more aware of what they need to be doing, and also if they ever paid attention to why, why, the why behind it, um, they'd understand there's, there's a reason behind it and helping, helping those guys out with a lot of work they have to do. Um, we also met with, uh, several citizens from the Carolina Garden community. That's a big neighborhood off of Perfoy Road here in the, uh, the boardroom week before last. And they wanted to, um, that's a fifty-five-plus community in, in Fuquay Varina. It's our first fifty-five-plus community, age-lot neighborhood. And they just wanted to learn, uh, more about their town, their community. And so only one of them, I believe, was from, or lived in Fuquay before they moved there. A few of them were Kerry, but most of them were completely out-of-state people that chose Fuquay Varina. And I was asking, well, how'd you find Carolina Gardens? How did you find Fuquay Varina there? And so the reason that we all love the town is what, what they knew. But they wanted to meet, um, some town, town staff, town employees, learn how, how to stay safe in their community too, and, and how to be involved with, with their, with Fuquay Varina. And so that was, was a really good meeting, and so I appreciate, appreciate staff being, being available for that too. Um, the country of Moldova. Who in here's heard of country of Moldova? You heard of country of Moldova before? Well, I have recently became heard, heard of it. Uh, Moldova is right beside Ukraine, and Ukraine's right beside Russia. And Moldova is a sister country to North Carolina. Not a state, sister state, uh, sister country type program. Say it right.
Sister government.
Sister government, what they call it, okay? And so they had, uh, a mayor and a couple, um, people from their, another, uh, another community's mayor and, and come, came to town. And so they came and had a Southern Wake Summit meeting. They wanted, all the good growth that we have going on here, they wanted to know how they could copy that in the, in their country. And so me and Holly Springs and Apex and, um, some staff from, managers from each of them all met together along with some state, some state, um, Secretary of State delegation, and taught about it. And so, but, so the purpose of all this is, you know, we discussed sister cities earlier in the budget season. We're working on building these relationships and being able to recruit other countries here for our manufacturers that can support them. And so not only do they want to learn about how they could grow like us, they want, we want to learn, they were looking for opportunities to partner. And that's, um, what we want to do, to help our businesses and our residents here. And so it was, it was very, um, eye-opening and a good, um, in, in, interesting experience. There, they are forbidden... There, they are forbidden, oh, no, uh, I'll tell you, I'm gonna interrupt the whole of all the facts they told us. Their town council, they have a town, their town is seventeen thousand people, if I remember right, and we're close to forty thousand. They have twenty-two town commissioners.
Wow.
Can you imagine trying to get anything done with twenty-two people? And that was their comment, they can't get anything done. So it was interesting, though. Um, that's it, though. Um, first fourteen. Manager, closed session?
Closed session tonight. The pursuit into North Carolina, session one forty-three, three eighteen eleven, eight three, twenty-five, and a five property acquisition.
Okay, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion, second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right. How long you think you need for the closed session?